On the June 21st, 2016, Riverton City Council Finance Meeting to order at 6:45, the Chair would entertain a motion for the consideration of claims.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to pay the amount of $367,764.55 and the amount of checks and payroll and liabilities on June 10th from the amount of $225,289.05 for a total of $593,053.60.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Does anybody have any questions?
I have none.
The only one that I had was for the electrical work on the Little League Park.
Madam Chairwoman? Would you be happy to address that?
So it's the 1687. So what was that for?
That was for a cooperative project that the Little League and the city shared. It was for a variable frequency drive. What it does is it helps the irrigation at the ballfields. We've had a lot of pressure problems there over the years, and this drive allows us to water the infield without having to water the outfield at the same time. We have a large amount of pressure that goes through those lines, and so it has been a point of frustration for the Little League where they want to wet down the fields, but they can't really do it without blowing the lines. And so in order to accommodate the pressures, usually you have to turn on the outfield sprinklers in order to sprinkle the infield, and it's just been a project that's needed to be done for some time.
So didn't they go in half with us or something on that?
Madam Chairwoman, that is correct. It was a 50-50 split.
Okay. That's all that I had. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.
I would now call the June 21st, 2016 Regular Meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Peterson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, Councilmember Larson will give us a prayer, an open prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for this opportunity to serve citizens of Riverton as council and councilmen, thankful for the life and place that we live in this fine area. Father bless us with understanding that we might do and help and say and be amenable to those wishes of our city of Riverton. Bless this town and its citizens. We humbly ask this. Name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the Deputy City Clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am present and declare that we have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the agenda is approved. The first item on the agenda is communications from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council this time to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the record.
Thank you. Wasn't sure if I was on the agenda or just coming from the floor, sir, so here I am.
Here you are.
On behalf of the Wyoming Veterans Commission, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the council to you, Mayor, and to the councilmen. Thank you all very much. I come to share with you just something that's coming on the 30th of June. Ask you all to please mark your calendars and join us. The Korean, South Korean Council General will be here in Lander at the community center over there at 2:45, and he will be presenting medallions to each and every veteran, Lander, Wyoming, and the reservation that had boots on the ground or was in the waters in Korea during the time of either what they call the Korean Conflict or now is recorded as the Forgotten War. So I ask for each and every one of you to think of those folks as we put the medallions on them. Governor will be here. General Reiner will be here. The members of the commission will be here. So with that, I thank you all for your time. If I have any questions, I take them from the floor. There'll be about 75 medallions given out if everyone shows up.
Well, that was my question, was how many we were going to do, and 75, that's a lot of folks.
And those are the ones we know are coming, sir. There are those who will probably come and will have to certify them at the door. I'm not sure. Those are the ones we have names for and we've certified as of now.
I see. Wow, that's great.
Thank you all very much. Anything else?
Well, we're glad to give you this opportunity to put this out on the cable so that the people in Riverton will know about it and have that opportunity and the time again.
The time is 2:45. I would suggest that you be there by a little after 2 o'clock. It is open to the public, and there will be a number of dignitaries there. We know that now.
Thank you. It's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that the governor's plane is they're going to do this in Cheyenne early in the morning.
They're starting at 8:30 in Cheyenne, and they're migrating from there to Casper for an 11:15 ceremony, and then they will be here to kick off by 2:45. So their schedule's pretty tight.
Pretty tight. So they're going to land at the airport and then
They'll go to Lander.
Down to the Lander Community Center, which is nearby.
Yes, sir.
And then that ceremony will go on at that point.
That is correct, sir.
That'll be great. Okay, well, we'll be represented there, okay?
Thank you all very much, and I look forward to seeing you.
You bet. Thank you. Would the Finance Director please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, June 7th, 2016 Regular Council Meeting. Approval of the minutes, June 14th, 2016 Work Session Meeting. Approval of the minutes, June 21st, 2016 Finance Committee Meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee Recommendations, June 21st, 2016. Open Container Permit Applications with Boot Bar, July 15th, 2016, Street Dance at 7:02 East Main at 5:00 PM to 1:00 AM. First Interstate Bank, July 7th, 2016 Company Picnic at Sunset Park, 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Thank you. Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Recommendations from the Finance Committee for claims to be paid in the amount of $367,764.55. Checks written for payroll liabilities for 6/10 of 2016 in the amount of $225,289.05 for a total of $593,053.60.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second. And, Your Honor, I would abstain from items regarding Bailey Enterprises or Wix. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Amendments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. The next item is a public hearing and consideration of fireworks permit applications for Riverton Rendezvous and Riverton Little League. Could we get the Finance Director's report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. The City Clerk's office has received two applications for fireworks permits. Riverton Rendezvous Committee for July 16th from 10:00 to 10:45 PM. Riverton Little League for June 30th from 9:00 to 9:45 PM, which are included in your council packet starting on page eight, along with site maps and letters of review from the Riverton Fire Chief. All applicable fees have been paid, and their paperwork is complete. Staff's recommendation is for the approval of these applications.
Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Your Honor, I would move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we open a public hearing for fireworks permits. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes. I now declare that the public hearing is open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes with other applicable laws, and I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Hi there. My name is Carla Kuchera. I'm the Secretary for the Riverton Little League Board, and I am just here to, I guess, represent the league and for you guys to make the decision. I don't know if you guys are familiar with our end-of-the-season festival that we have going on. We serve a picnic lunch usually for all the players, and we have the championship games that night, and the All-Stars are announced during that evening. It's a lot of fun. There's a lot of people from the community down there, and then we usually end the evening with fireworks. So we appreciate your consideration and hope that you guys say yes. And thank you also for all of your support this season. It's been a great season. I know there's 300-plus little kids that are involved in the league, and we couldn't do it without you guys. So we really appreciate all your help and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue?
Your Honor, Council, thank you. My name's Eric Carr. I am with the Rendezvous Balloon Festival Committee, and we'd like to invite everybody out, June 15, or July 15th, 16th, and 17th. Our annual fireworks are a great capper to the Saturday events, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? There being no others to speak, the Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we close public hearing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes. Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be closed, and the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the fireworks permits.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the fireworks permit for Riverton Rendezvous and Riverton Little League.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to let it be known that I do sit on the Little League Board and to make this vote.
Okay. All right. I assume you're in favor of fireworks?
I am in favor of fireworks.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. The next item is Ordinance Number 16-002 and Ordinance Number 16-003 on third and final reading, Riverton Municipal Code Title 13 revisions. The Finance Director, please read Ordinance Number 16-002 and Ordinance Number 16-003 by title only.
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number 16-002 and Ordinance Amending Title 13 Public Services, revising Chapter 13.04. Building Procedures for Public Services, Section 13.04.030. Termination of Service, 13.04.040. Payment Arrangements, 13.04.050. Return Check Fee, and adding Section 13.04.110. Base Charges for Services of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Proposed Ordinance Number 16-003 and Ordinance Amending Title 13 Public Services, revising Chapter 13.08.010. Definitions, Section 13.08.040. Agreement to Rules and Regulations for Requisite to Commencement of Service, 13.08.080. City Not liable for Broken Pipes Appertices, 13.08.100. Discontinuance of Service for Failure to Comply with Regulations, 13.08.200. Fee Amounts, 13.08.390. Defacing, Injuring, Bypassing, Et Cetera, 13.08.400. Metered Consumption Rates, 13.08.470. Discontinuance of Service for Failure to Pay, 13.08.500. Fee for reinstating discontinued services of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 16-002. We're going to split this into two votes. So the Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 16-002 on third and final reading.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve Ordinance 16-002 on the third reading.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we would adopt Ordinance Number 16-002 on third and final reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Roll call.
Roll call. Would the Deputy Clerk please conduct the roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Yes.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Yes.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Yes.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Yes.
Mayor John Baker.
Yes. Motion passes. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 16-003 on third and final reading.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion. We adopt Ordinance Number 16-003 on final third reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? Would the Deputy Clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Yes.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Yes.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Yes.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Yes.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
The mayor votes yes, and the motion passes. The next item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing and consideration of Ordinance 16-004. First reading, Residential Zone Name Change. Community Development Directors Report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. As requested, we have brought back the ordinance for the residential zone name designation change. This is for Residential A, Residential B, BGA, Residential B, and Residential C, and we have pretty much gone over this before. This does just change the names of these zoning designations at this time for the residential to make it clearer and be more consistent with the way that most municipalities zone their residential areas. This does not change the uses of any of these zones at this time. It just changes the names, and then we will go into the uses once we get the names changed.
Would the Finance Director please read Ordinance Number 16-004 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number 16-004 on first reading and Ordinance Amending Title 17 Zoning to revise Chapters 17.12. Zoning Districts Designated, 17.16. General Requirements, 17.28. A residential district. 17.32, B residential district. 17.36, BGA residential district. And 17.40, C residential district of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith and provide for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and opened, moved and seconded to open public hearing on Ordinance Number 16-004. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
No realtors?
There being no others, no one to speak, the Chair would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 16-004 on first reading. Your Honor, I would move that we accept or approve Ordinance Number 16-004 on first reading.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Larson?
I'm wondering, so the basic differences are R1 goes to A, R2 goes to B, R1A or RA goes to BGA, and R4 goes to C residential. That's what we're doing? That's the sum substance of it.
Sandy?
Yes, Your Honor. That is correct. That is exactly what we're doing.
So we're not changing anything within. We're just changing the title from ABC or from R1, R2, RA, and R4 to ABC, B, C, or BGA and C.
Your Honor, yes, that is correct. We decided that it was easier to change the names first before we got into changing the uses, because as we were working on that, we kept confusing ourselves and saying, well, that's going to be this, and we want to change that. So what we have done, we decided to just change the names first, the designations, the zoning designations, and then once we get that changed, we have left R3 for future use, which is what the council kind of wanted us to do in the uses, is to change that at some point in time. Once we dug into it, we realized that it is going to be fairly lengthy to do that, and we'll have to have some public hearings, so we figured we would get the names changed first.
Your Honor, I just want to clarify that it's going from A to R1, not the other way around.
So we'll basically have residential 1, 2, 3, 4, right? Okay.
Say that again, Steve.
So our current zones right now are A, B, and C, and BGA, and those are all going to R1, R2, R3, and R4.
No, no RA?
And RA.
RA, sorry.
Oh, okay.
My problem is I'm trying to read the summary, you know, and understand that. Ordinance Amending Title 17 Zoning to revise Chapters 17.2. Zoning Districts Designated, 17.16. Requirements, A residential, B residential. Okay, I'll have to... So the discussion that I have, you know, in the packet is clear. I'm trying to equate that with the title, okay? It may be that I'm not reading it right, but I struggle with that at the moment. Have you?
Well, Your Honor, we're changing what is currently listed in the zone. I mean, what's in the municipal code.
Oh.
You're changing those zoning designations as it's listed in the code right now.
Just the 1, 2, 3, 4.
Okay. All right. Is there any other discussion? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Item Number 12 is Bid Award Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting. Uh, item number twelve is bid award aircraft rescue and firefighting, uh, A R F F, ARF truck. Public Works Directors report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, Riverton Regional Airport operates under a part one thirty-nine license as a commercial airport. Uh, you are all aware of this. As part of this license, the airport agrees to provide emergency and fire rescue, uh, services for those that utilize the airfield. A vital component of providing these services is the air rescue and firefighting equipment or ARF equipment. Per federal mandate, the airport is required to, uh, acquire an ARF truck every fifteen years. Um, and Riverton Regional Airport is scheduled to do so in fiscal year seventeen. Javiation, the airport's consulting firm, prepared specifications and bid documents for the acquisition of this new ARF truck. Uh, bid documents provided two schedules on which vendors could bid. Schedule one directly dealt with the truck itself and schedule two dealt with ancillary firefighting equipment that, uh, would associate the truck and then also those that operated the truck in an, in an emergency. The, uh, requests for bids were advertised for three consecutive weeks in the Riverton Ranger, Denver Daily Journal and on YDOT's bidding page. Two bids were received and publicly opened at one P M. on June seventh, two thousand and sixteen with the following results. Oshkosh Airport Products for schedule one, six hundred and one thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars for schedule two, sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars for a total of six hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. The second bid was from Rosenbauer America and they submitted schedule one at six hundred and two thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. They did not supply a bid for the second schedule for a total of six hundred and two thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. City staff, Javiation, the FAA and YDOT Aeronautics have reviewed the submitted bids for responsiveness to specifications. It is therefore recommended upon this review that the city council award schedule one and schedule two of the ARF truck to Oshkosh Airport Products LLC in the amount of six hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. There are sufficient funds available in fiscal year seventeen for this purchase as was recently approved when the budget was adopted by the governing body. Furthermore, I do want to note that the recommended bid award has come in, uh, just over one hundred thousand dollars below the engineer's estimate. So, bids were very, uh, competitive and they were good in our favor. The FAA, as you are aware, provides financial support to airports, um, through the Airport Improvement Program for capital improvement projects. From this program, the FAA agrees to pay ninety-three point seven five percent of improvement costs. Wyoming Aeronautics and the city of Riverton cover the remaining cost of the improvements at three point seven five and two point five respectively. Therefore, the city's two point five percent portion of the six hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollar purchase is only sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-three cents. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would move that we accept the bid for the new ARF truck to Oshkosh.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Mr. Canaan?
Sir, what are you, what are, what's gonna, what do we do with our existing equipment? Thing is how we had to, quote, buy a new one every fifteen years. What happens to the one that's up there?
Your Honor, I can address that.
Thank you.
New regulations with that one thirty-nine certificate set, states that the existing equipment will go into a backup for the subsequent fifteen years. So, the new piece of equipment will be the primary firefighting and rescue, uh, truck and we will have a backup. And this is again to be compliant with, uh, regulations from the FAA. So, our current vehicle, um, is in good working order and it will go into a backup role for the next fifteen years.
How many miles has got on it?
Two.
Ah!
Fortunately, we don't have many miles on that, which means we haven't had many accidents at our airport.
Ah! I, I worked for the Union Pacific Railroad once.
That's, that's where it was coming on and off the railcar.
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah. And, and, uh, they had a fire engine for the yards in, in Pocatilla, Idaho. And the, and the, and the truck was like a nineteen thirty-two fire truck. And, uh, it had tires on it like a tractor. They were about forty-eight inch tires so that it could climb over, uh, railroad tracks and tires and, you know, tr- uh, tr- the tracks and all that kinda stuff. And, uh, and so it, it had thirty-two miles on it. Built nineteen thirty-two. I took them an hour to start it.
Did you crank the front?
Oh, yeah. Well, they, it took them an hour to get it going every time they wanted to run it. And, uh, so the city, the city fire department generally answered the call and put out the fire. And after the smoke turned from black to white, you could still hear the, uh, and the whistle quit blowing. You could still hear them cranking the engine on the fire truck for the, I hope, I hope this piece of equipment at the, at the airport has got better response capability than that. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Resolution thirteen thirty-nine Airport Improvement Program Forty-One Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting Truck Grant Award. Is this related?
Your Honor, it is.
Okay. Public Works Directors report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this grant is the ninety-three point seven five percent grant that was mentioned in the previous report. Uh, the FAA, uh, had perfect timing on this and they have the grant ready for award at the same time that we are doing our bid award. So, um, staff is bringing to you resolution number thirteen thirty-nine. This resolution is a resolution in support of the execution of this grant. Um, per our instructions for this, uh, grant award, uh, the governing body needs to designate, uh, an official to sign this grant. Um, again, this is for the grant portion of the purchase of the truck that you just approved. It is in the amount of, uh, ninety-three point seven five percent of the entire, uh, project cost. So, that is the acquisition of the truck, the additional firefighting equipment and then also the, uh, cost for bidding and design. Um, staff recommends that city council approve resolution thirteen thirty-nine supporting the execution of Airport Improvement Program Grant, A I P Grant Number Three dash fifty-six dash zero zero two four dash zero four one dash two thousand and sixteen. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve resolution number thirteen thirty-nine, approval of the ARF truck grant award.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Uh, it seems to me like this is backwards. We, we approved the bid and now we're going after the grant.
Perhaps we could have reversed them in order.
Thank you.
Good feedback. Thank you.
All's in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mo- mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Next item is bid award on South Broadway Monroe Asphalt Project. Public Works Directors report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is one of our one percent projects. Uh, this is an asphalt improvement project. Um, as you are aware, the Fix Our Road Citizen Committee is our advisory board for our projects. And as staff worked with the committee, uh, last October and then also early this winter, went through a list of projects where we could improve, um, the asphalt in our community. Um, an area highlighted for improvement was South Broadway and also Monroe. As you remember, last year, we did a one percent project where we improved ADA ramps, curbs and gutter and waterways along this cor- on, along these two corridors, I should say. Uh, I would like to consider and propose that this project is phase two of our work that we completed last year. We improved the drainage and now we're in a great opera, a great position, I should say, to improve the asphalt and the roadway in its entirety. Uh, with the help of a local concern, consulting firm, Jim Gorson Associates, staff put together plans and specifications for the South Broadway Monroe Asphalt Project. Uh, this project was advertised for bid on May twenty-ninth and June fifth of two thousand and sixteen. Two contractors attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting. Bids were received and opened on June fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen with the following results. Dave's Asphalt Company of Riverton, Wyoming at three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and Seventy-One Construction of Riverton, Wyoming at two hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Staff reviewed the bid results to assure that they were responsive to bid specification and recommends that the city council award the bid to Seventy-One Construction in the amount of two hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. As an aside, the engineer projection for this project was two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Therefore, our recommendation comes, uh, under our, uh, original estimate. There are funds sufficient in our one percent account for this project and therefore we again recommend approval from the city council. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Chairman entertain a motion to approve the bid award on South Broadway Monroe Asphalt Project.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve the bid for South Broadway Monroe Asphalt Project to Seventy-One Construction of Riverton, Wyoming for two hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Mayor votes aye and motion passes. Council Committee reports and Council Members Roundtable. Mr. Bailey?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. Um, again, I had the pleasure of attending the airport board meeting where, again, we discussed the ARF truck and those bid awards. And of course, they, they recommended approving those and sending them to us. Um, also, they discussed the airport open house, which, uh, was a very successful, had a lot of good turnout. Somewhere over five hundred people came up and visited and looked at all the airplanes and the facilities and looked over all of our nice snowplow and firefighting equipment. And, and there were several planes on display. So, I think it turned out to be a really wonderful day. Uh, again, anticipating the new airlines arrival starting first of this July. Um, so, we're hoping that the, uh, you know, enplanements and deplanements will increase dramatically, uh, with the additional service that we're going to receive. I also wa- uh, was in attendance at the force committee meeting, again, where we went over the projects that we have in process. And of course, there's about three additional projects that are still being prepared to be out for bid here in the very near future. Uh, so, with the expected expense of those projects, um, again, there's about two million dollars in the account right now that of, and including the projects that we've spent some money on. Um, there's additional monies that's going to be expended. And then with the additional bids that we have, that we did tonight and the additional ones that are in the pipe to be bid on here fairly quick, we probably have in the tune of four hundred thousand dollar range left in that account. Um, so, again, we're making good use of the one percent tax money and spending it to improve, you know, our streets and roads and the infrastructure related to that. Um, and of course, we have, have earmarked some of that fund to help us with the expected, um, storm water costs that we're gonna be saddled with on the new, uh, North Federal Improvement Program. So, again, we look to, pretty much we've expended, with the projects that we have in the pipe, we've pretty much expended the funds that we have probably coming in for this year. And again, hoping that we can get that renewed this election season, uh, because we have plenty of work to do. And I think the, the public understands that, that it's good improvements and we're helping improve the streets. And, uh, it's given the city funds that we aren't able to generate otherwise to do those projects. And then I was, again, had the pleasure of attending the skate park open house this last Saturday. And, uh, again, Holly spoke and several other people. And they had a really good turnout and lots of kids. And again, I think it's a fine improvement to our city park. And, uh, every time I drive by there, it seems like there's a lot of kids out there skating and biking and, and doing those things. So, I think it's a great improvement. And, uh, I think the, the community needs to be, uh, really complimented on, on the, how people came together, had tons of donations from all kinds of different places and people and got that thing done. And, of course, the city and the school district recreation board and all of those, you know, helped pitch in money and lots of people from the community. So, I think it's admirable. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Canaan?
Sir, I went to the, uh, pawls, uh, board for the local animal shelter. Uh, of course, their big event for the year is their Pearls and Paws, uh, type event. Uh, they're getting ready to, I want to say finalize their flyers and their banners. Uh, so, they're getting down to the deadline for, uh, sponsors for that event. So, if anybody would like to be a sponsor for Pearls and Paws, uh, they, they need to have you at least signed up by the twentieth of July. Uh, sponsors, uh, start at two hundred and fifty dollars and go up from there. Uh, they'll have a booth at the Dan the Park on July ninth. So, again, you can either contact the people up at the local pawls shelter or you may be able to get ahold of them there at their booth on, and Dan the Park. Uh, the other thing they're, uh, looking forward to help themselves out in this, this year, of course, like everybody else, they're, they're a little bit of a financial crunch. Uh, you can, uh, sponsor a kennel for a dog. Uh, basically, it's, uh, three hundred dollars for the year. Uh, basically, that three hundred dollars takes care of the dog that is living in that kennel at the time, provides the food, the, the shots, the whole thing. Uh, if you'd rather do it for a cat because you're a cat person, it's a hundred dollars, uh, for the year to, uh, concert, excuse me, sponsor that kennel for the cat. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
I don't have anything this week.
Mr. Larson?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. Attended the, uh, Waste Fremont Solid Waste Disposal District Meeting on, uh, May sixteenth. And, uh, the feelings were still not in, uh, cajoiled yet on whether they are going to or not going to continue on with, uh, recycling. But, we had a report from one, uh, one of their engineers that the projected, uh, solvency of the was good up to two thousand and thirty. So, I just went, phew, it's beyond my scope, so I don't have to worry about it. Um, but, uh, they, I still think that sometime by August, we'll get that, that word on. The recycling died an honorable death. So, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Mr. Peterson?
Uh, yes, just to kinda go along with what Ms. Cuchera said with our fireworks. Uh, next week is championship week for baseball in the city of Riverton. Um, Wednesday night, Babe Ruth will have their championship night. Six thirty, the game starts up at Babe Ruth Field. And then Thursday night, we'll be down at Ron Saven where the minors and the majors both have their championship. Both, both parks will be serving a, a price dinner. I believe it's five dollars for a ticket and you get a dinner out of it and watch some baseball. And then Thursday night, there will be a fireworks display. So, come out and support the, the youth of Riverton and see some good baseball in summertime. Enjoy it.
Good, good. Ms. Gibbon?
Um, I just had a few people call me the last week or so asking about the senior center and kind of where we sit on that. Um, I actually did send the executive director an email on June third, um, explaining that we will not be giving out any more money out of the endowment due to the fact that there was actually an overpayment of seven thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. Um, so, we're, I'm just waiting right now to see kinda what her thoughts are on how she's gonna repay the endowment with that. Um, I know that their funds are short, but I kinda need to put that money back into that account. So, um, just kinda waiting. Um, the reason that it was an overage is because at that time, we were still paying the utilities even though per the old agreement, it stated that we weren't supposed to be, the seniors were responsible for it. So, um, if anybody has any questions or concerns, feel free to give me a call. Um, and then also the skate park had an amazing turnout and it was super fun. So, that's all.
Well, um, I appreciate your, uh, work with seniors and, uh, being the Chair of the Finance Committee and, uh, and, um, trying to get that sorted out. Thank you.
You're welcome.
City Administrators report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, we had some exciting news come to us. Uh, city had applied for a SLIP grant, uh, down in Cheyenne for one point three for the North Federal Project. We were- grant down in Cheyenne for one point three for the North Federal Project. We were hopeful. The staff had actually, SLIP staff had recommended that it be approved. There was only about five million dollars available between all the communities down there, and it awarded the whole one point three to the city of Riverton. So that's, that's good news for us.
Yippee.
We need as much as we can towards North Federal. So a lot of kudos to Kyle. He went down there and represented us and brought it home.
And why do you think we were successful?
Your Honor, honestly, I think that we have so many different pots of money that we're using towards that. In my experience, when I sat through a SLIP meeting before, if you're asking for a hundred percent from them, they were more apt to deny that or only give you a portion. But when you have money coming from one percent in other grants and loans and monies from your own pocket, they're more apt to help out with that. And probably because it's a wide-out project, it's state-run, and this is all tied together.
Thank you. Yeah. I appreciate, I appreciate the package that Kyle put together on that to make that work.
And, Your Honor, may I highlight Dawn Wilhelm? She did a lot of work on that as well.
Sure, sure. Appreciate, appreciate that. Credit to everybody that was involved.
We have a budget amendment scheduled for next Tuesday. That would be the only thing on the agenda. Hopefully, that will work for most of you. Some of them may not be able to be in attendance. It should be only about ten minutes. We have to do this every year to make everything line up before the end of the fiscal year. So if you can't make that, please let me know, and we'll just make sure we have a quorum.
Go ahead.
Are we short or long on that amendment, on that meeting? In other words, are we going to be going in looking to borrow, or are we going in looking that we're long?
No, we have, we have enough within our existing. We just have to move it around to different line items. We're not going to have to take any from reserves or...
Yippee skippy.
Okay. The time on that is?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty on Tuesday, June twenty-eighth.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
I wanted to bring up a little bit about the Honor Farm. I know there's a little angst in the community about Honor Farm property and the fact that Steve Wilson was representing the Eastern Shoshone Tribe. I've had several conversations with him. I'm really hopeful in the sense that they were down in Vegas at a conference, a big retail conference, where they tried to attract people to come to Riverton. And so they have every intention to make that into a great development out there and provide services for Fremont County. And so I just wanted to, my two cents is I believe everything that he has told me, he's been upfront, honest with me, and I think it's going to be a great thing. It's keeping the money local instead of having a developer come in here from out of state, developing it and leaving. So this is a local money that's going to be used. Also, we have, on the radio every day, we're going to be giving vouchers out for Denver Air Connections. And so be listening to the radio to win tickets to go to Denver. So a voucher will be given out every day until July first, when the first flight goes out. So if you're interested in that, be listening to the radio and be a call-in.
Which radio?
I think it's all of them.
Your Honor, we're working with the Wind River Radio Network, so they're going to go across several stations.
And then the final thing is, several council members have brought up that they're not going to be here during work sessions in July and August. And obviously, the point of work sessions is to try to bring, explore options that are coming up or difficult issues that are coming up. And with only, if a couple of them are not going to be here, maybe it's something we should not even have those meetings. So I'm just bringing that up as an option if you think we shouldn't even have the meetings in July and August for the work session.
I'm for that.
You're for that?
Yeah. July and August is really busy for me. So, I mean, having one less thing would help tremendously.
Do we have any, do we have any issues that seem to be?
Your Honor, the only issue that we were planning for our July work session was the discussion about changing the speed limit on Airport Road.
Could we, could we blend that into a regular council meeting?
We could.
So that we could, you know, adjourn the regular council meeting and then have the work session, or even just have it as an agenda item, I guess, in the regular council meeting. And, yeah, let's just, let's just put that as an agenda item. Mr. Bailey?
Your Honor, just, not that you're going to arrange it around my schedule, but, let me look here. I will be gone the nineteenth, which is our regular, second regular council meeting. And the twenty-sixth, I would not be there either. And then in August, again, I am gone the ninth. So, again, I'm in the same boat as Holly. I've got tons of commitment. So that would work out better.
Hope you're using our airports.
I'm trying.
Your Honor.
They already bumped me once.
Just about every week in July, I'll be somewhere doing a Little League tournament. So I'm kind of in the same boat for the month of July. August is pretty open for me, but July, I'll be, I'll be busy.
So these are Tuesday nights?
I'll be traveling Tuesdays, and everything starts on Wednesdays.
I see. So will we have quorums? Have we, if we have?
If I'm needed, I can wait till after the meeting and travel, because it's only three or four hours to where I'm going, and I don't have to be there till Wednesday morning. But, so.
Okay.
I can stay in contact. I mean, I know it's a little bit more easier for me to be flexible about traveling if I, if I can get up and leave at four o'clock in the morning to get there, so I don't have to catch a flight.
Your Honor?
I have a question on the work session. We're talking about the speed limit on the airport. If, in a work session, we can't make any decisions, but if we have it on a regular council, are we going to plan on making a decision of whether to change it or not?
Your Honor, no. I mean, typically, for issues, we want to explore them, and then it would come up on the next regular council meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Mayor's comments. I listened to a phone call complaint about the vegetation behind the Holiday Inn. And I wonder, I did drive by this afternoon and see that it's all laying down. So it did get mowed today, but I have a question about, about the ground that's on the other side of the street there. There's a little kind of sliver of ground that seems to be orphaned. Is that part of this same property, or is that somebody else's? It didn't, it did not get cut.
Your Honor, I believe they probably ran out of time. That will be cut, too.
Okay. Okay. All right. Good. Thank you very much. I, I kind of look around town, and I, and I see a number of, you know, agricultural fields inside the city limits that are similar. It's just that I wonder about the zoning issue there, where this is commercial, and I think maybe all those others are, well, I don't know what those others are. Like, like, there's a, there's a field at Hill Street and, and West Main, which has got, you know, it's in grass hay and alfalfa, and there's horses on it. And so it's obviously inside the city limits. Maybe it's zoned agricultural. And, you know, so, and there's a piece off of Major, you know, across from the library there that is a, you know, so those are inside the city limits, but they're obviously used for agricultural purposes. And so I just wonder, you know, when I read the code, it says that it can't be inconsistent with the neighboring development. And I'm just not sure what that means. Okay?
Your Honor, doesn't U.S. Energy have a field next to it that is in horses and pasture?
Yes, they do. Yeah. And, and so that's a little different than the, that's, that's a little different than the vacant lot that's across the street from the U.S. Energy Building that they also own, which does get mowed and sprayed on a regular basis. Well, it's hard to figure all that out. So I guess I don't see anything terribly incompatible with, with, you know, taking that, leaving that stand for hay, especially this year where we had ample moisture that that grass kind of grew, and I don't think it looked bad. And now it's cut. My only concern there is that, that that may release some of the broadleaf weeds, where the grass is no longer going to be competing. And so then that may mean that in another month, we'll have to go do some mowing or something in order to keep that looking good.
Your Honor?
Mm-hmm.
They do plan, once this, once the grass is completely cut, they will spray what weeds are there, because there are some weeds, and they're going to go ahead and spray those and try to keep the grass growing like it's been growing. It looks very nice. They're doing a very, very good job of maintaining those properties.
Good. Thank you very much. Well, I think everything else that's coming up was covered pretty good in council comments. So executive session, I believe we've got one tonight. The Chair would entertain a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of litigation, considering litigation to which our governing body is or may become a party in accordance with Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A three. So entertain a motion.
Adhere to executive session.
Second.
It had been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye. We stand in executive session, and the Chair invites our attorney and Mr. Weaver and Luer, Sandy Luer, to join us.
Your Honor, make a motion that we reconvene into regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we reconvene. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay. No, I'm, I'm sorry.
Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. The regular session of the City Council is now reconvened at eight fifty, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. We have no action items. The Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adjourn. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye, and we are adjourned at eight fifty. We did that really fast. Maybe we should close that.
Eight forty-nine.
Eight forty-nine in order to...
Thank you, President.